I don't know. So, I'm going to go to the other side. I'm going to say, so I think you're not going to do it. So, I think that's in the, in the field. I believe that. And then, that's it. That's why I'm there. And then, yeah. Oh, well, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, 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 that's. That part of the, that's, that's. The key word. So, it's. And, you know, that's kind of the issue. So, I, I, oh, that's what I'm saying. What's the, what's the question? Like, mom.
Do you want that room left open or back? Yeah, we want a lot of emergency. Okay.
Post level lots on the road. We I we came in last week or two weeks ago and it was scary fourteen. Uh but after a little more examination on the the sideline distances, we combined lots one and two of them. One lot, um so reduced the impact of thirteen. Uh two boost lots could be access on a small power road or maybe long uh drive.
Thank you. At this time, if all of you guys have any questions, please identify yourself.
And sharing follow up. I'm sharing follow up for our house on where. And I'm just wondering if you can tell from the ground where where the the roads would be going in and out. I'm trying to avoid an intersection with traffic right across the street.
Uh I think sure there may be. Sure, there's only there's only two drives for a lot of roads. Uh all the other lots have road very long.
The other lots have road.
Yeah, so eleven thirteen had road.
You mean come down the road and turn right into the gravel?
Right. Yeah. Uh I'm not sure where your location is now. Um.
There are two roads that have long before them.
No, it's the only one. So all all of these off here.
I see. Um so that and then we know.
So I have no thing I need to do that I've been working on. There is left open, so here is where I put future as well.
We actually know.
Um I'm not really sure what it's gonna happen. This is this is the. Getting the the road.
What's your timing of breaking around?
Um you know, so depending. I don't know. It really all.
All right, Shane, this is the design bill. Um this day and we're in public hearing, so we'll be explaining project. Is there anybody else that has questions? All right. And here's this. Where you're meeting the plan work order. First order, there is a pool, man, so like. All right, my name is. All of them better do enough. Four one. Next order doing this. Mr. Lily, you got. Did you receive the copy of that dated by?
Yeah, every year.
We were meant to talk to the friends who were preparing by our plan. Here today. Everybody had a chance to hear it. For first of all. Uh one is uh.
So I called the after last meeting, I called in and the the one I spoke, I'm not sure who was. I I guess I either misunderstood, there was a twenty five dollar fee, so I was right. Sent in, but now I do, I am under the understanding that it's gonna be fifty dollars per lot by the sounds. Um there's a twenty five dollar fee if it's under a certain amount of lots and we're over that threshold. Yeah, we're over that threshold. And and I can settle off that.
Yes. Uh we're asked about. Final order we term. Small drive. Four hundred foot long. Or a little bit ones between lots eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. Only to have a cross section.
So that was.
Yeah. Of rating with favor inside of order three or so. Um I guess basically we have side orders one. Five road. As standards, yeah, this. These things can be all applied. So that's a different for ran away fourteen point. How way. The grade of the orange. What's the plans? Is it or which?
Um yeah, I but I think it while I do have a private road maintenance to be for those lots. Uh I I think at this point, there's, you know, it'll be a private road. But you know, I if if there is any future development, you know, later on, um I would definitely, you know, that would be part of the plans for that future project to upgrade the standard. Correct. Yeah. Sure. I'm sure.
Um but there is road in this case, yes, reminded people to conduct road. But there is a lot of road to have.
Yeah.
And the right for certain four or less now less than forty rounds, nine, it's thirty four.
Yeah. So it's only access, you know, two, uh the other ones have broken by John Boyd.
They will have five hundred.
They would have broke this. Yeah.
So there's a correct was four. A lot of that. We need to have a. Procession plan. Perfect. By. Sorry. Eighteen foot five probably. This would be a thing usually the shift to the back door. It's usually something. I want this to never be found. I mean, the second motion. Second motion. They should try to turn them on. Can we go with those? There's a sound issue and we have. Are we well within seventy, so we have to do a question. It will be, I imagine, an eight eight half. Possibly just that space. Anyone? I drive away and driveway. Four four of the lots is called the right road and both were designated.
So on the drug where you're proposing, though, was only gonna service two homes for homes.
Um there it's really to access two lots, the the lost number fourteen and twelve. Eleven and thirteen have road by John Boyd.
So this proposed driveway where they were just as this. Two, just to provide access to those two homes.
As far as I'm aware now, yes.
Other two lots that time and I'm sure their plans are not that good.
That that could be, that could be the case in.
Potentially all the service. Let let before the government.
Well, the back the backlog, I mean, it has other access points plus a whole lot of remainers.
It's still count because it's ununderwritten. Yeah, puts it all. All right, I do see a sentence that have. A typical question for a right of service and four more lots for our standard submitted. And this is sent to the board. And then on page five. As it was semi-matched on location, the water body could be affected by erosion, sanitation. From this project. Personally, I don't need a graphic, I know where that source.
Monsoon is considered a water.
A water.
Yeah. But then the vote says the planning board meaning that did not believe that any water bodies have been posted across the city impact. Was willing to monster it's impacted.
But it's impacted because it's a way of way. Sanitation. Really go on for the times.
And you know, and I'm not sure what to scale on this, but I mean, it's looking like. Month we've worked is probably. Nine hundred or thousand dollars from the the closest law to that area. To me, that's not close proximity. Right, I don't think it applies.
And this way. Page five.
It's near the bottom. It's gonna be.
Cindy Matt on the location. And that's. All right. Concerned with the priority, we should wave that. Six. Brains that. Carriage. Going with the water goes down. We have a large. General fee. Their way eventually.
So having been on the site, we're very obviously the world's best. So we're on the third of the week. I guess who was.
Sometimes it is. And I'm sorry, okay. So. We have the. The others twelve. Wait.
Can that be part of like the conditions of approval?
Um.
Where?
That again, it's initial, we get the plan and sign that the mindset. Well, there's a sense submitted. All of that. So it was only you that does that sign was set.
I'll make sure I get it in this next this week.
You're good. Any further questions? All right, we find application.
Yeah, so it's should be on the mapping everything. Oh, yeah, so. Yeah. Sure, no, I'm just.
You didn't find it. Do we have a motion finding application?
I make a motion to find the application included.
Not gonna say any comments, questions. All as a favor, find application. Uh can we proceed to review based on condition that he will fly this two things. Now it's now it's town plan, this contract town plan. And the base place. So. I said, anyways, now I think against the these middle act all the act materials. Exactly.
I make a motion to find that condition upon cross section map and payment of the additional fees needed to ask this. Unless you saw.
I'm almost standing there. All as in favor of global fashion conditions. Very well.
Okay, appreciate it.
All right, we do have one. Question of our series, well, we're wanting to do what it's done for families. You should have received, we received a parent's using application to reuse. The. Another building blocks. Orange.
For the lock.
That for the lock up. Um I got ahead of the game and the open. So I do have to review why I did for the contract plan. That's the next project, she goes. So there they. Four walk now and back door. If everybody finds it. In order.
What was the house in place?
I use the master button.
Yeah.
And. Well, we went to the building. Seven one. Um block. I'm assuming this. Born, you know, two. You know.
The previous was on the other side of the road. Two years or three years.
But I've been signed with Bill Bill who had the M H R. I was installing that and I still have a couple of boots in me. And I also predicted, I don't know, here express, it's better now growing down with that on that.
It's on the loss. I make a motion to approve this, it's just a continuation of consistent business in the area.
And expression. All fair. And that's good because I signed it. I will transfer that to those. And I have a kind of film. I did everything that. And and thank you, uh thank my uh sentiment. And somehow I think I have to renew the code.
Yeah, it has nothing, you just have to go to the code off.
We we just prove that you can with much. Sign.
Good luck again.
Yeah. And the other thing is. We will now for. Names one. That's the one. But when you. The names. Basically proven, this is uh putting what we did. Pay for format for getting to the sign.
But this is a little looking blue is paid for new lot that they grabbed.
No, they're not. Yeah, they're a bunch of ground. But the expansion, the expansion. Plus they already. Already project. Our motion to be assigned the. So I can never do. That movement. And a decision all in favor. Very further, we should be drawn for them. Why don't we try? That's. Oh, I'm sorry. Your. I'm glad.
There we even had a long seat up here with papers. You've not learned this.
Really? Yeah, and who said it was? And I always hear with apparently it's a gang number.
Yeah. Um just here, he needs to go away, they can connect this way. Here, listen.
That's right. Well, we're working on any question. You're all clear for us?
Yes, I am. I'm that. So I just. Fairly been here, so we didn't have a flaw.
For anybody I'm gonna watch again. We're also uh like. So if you know anything, so it's in Washington. They're looking to plan one. You're all lucky and the. Flare is three oh three. I'm not sure. So yes, but we do not. And our business time is not finished. All prior ordinance to go. Let it for the proof. The priority. People. Um but it also did. I'd ask so important. Or permission to the ordinance per due to looking subdivision ordinance or that. In the end of that. You don't think works that way?
Need sweeping.
They didn't need sweeping, please. You know, I don't know where she just email me or catch my ear. I'm coming for my.
Yes. Yes.
So I got lots of anybody will.
Get one to report to July. Very pleased.
Yeah. I heard it on the the ordinance review, maybe only work something select word. Now that's it, I'll say what you say.
If I mention the fees being kind of low.
Yeah, well, we've been trying to take these all all these things. There are the ordinance, take the down even path. There is a slight work. Change it. You're really involved. Or.
Yeah, just come on. And compares in the other towns.
You're in you're in the. Yeah. But you need people. Oh, obviously, we should do. One or the other. I understand you're getting up. Can I sort of? All right.
Yeah.
So maybe that.
Sweeper.
So we will be scheduled today. Double period of planning or or important for our ordinance. At the next. I expect. The usual.
You call that in mind at seven thirty one P M on the favorite motion that we are challenging.
All roads in favor? Thank you for drawing up.
Maybe you have to move someone.
Well, it's that. I already have my way. So. I don't have to do all.
Say another one.
Yeah, well. Really late time looking at it. Small. Instead of to make a state or piece of our center of management.
No.
One. Sky definitely. Well, he wants this now.
Young fellow. And we're gonna go to the call.
Every year.
Yeah, oh, so we just. Don't give any. Now and I'm on.
That is.
Yes.
So continuing the move. The proceedings.
Things somewhere. I don't know. By the time that they call. You know, but there's there's something about.
Very much.
Self good. I'm. That are usable for.